...to the City of Murfreesboro Planning Commission meeting for June 17, 2020. We'll call the meeting to order. We do have a quorum present. Thank you all, everybody, for being here. Our first item of business is our consent agenda, and I'll read through those. The first item, A, is Veterans Cove, a preliminary plat for four lots on 22.8 acres, zoned PRD located along the north side of Veterans Parkway. Alcorn Properties LLC is the developer. Item B, Elam Farms, re-subdivision of Lot 3, preliminary plat for two lots on 77.65 acres, zoned light industrial located along Elam Farms Parkway and Elam Road. Prologis LP is the developer. Item C is Beckham Point, final plat for 32 lots on 17.86 acres, zoned RS 6, located along Esquire Drive and Mary Beth Court, BRS Development developer. Item D is Buford Creek, final plat for 21 lots on 16.22 acres, zoned RS 12, located along Osborne Lane, BRS Development developer. Item E is Pinnacle Bank Site Plan for 12,250 square foot building on 1.09 acres, zoned CBD and CCO located at the northeast corner of West College Street and North Maple Street. Pinnacle Financial Partners is the developer. Item F is East Side Village Site Plan for 11,100 square foot multi-tenant commercial building on 1.93 acres, zoned PCD located along North Rutherford Boulevard and Yearwood Avenue. Greenland Properties LLC is the developer. And item G is Evergreen Cemetery Maintenance Building Site Plan for 4,800 square foot maintenance building at existing cemetery on 1.4 acres, zoned RS 10, located at 519 Greenland Drive. Evergreen Cemetery is the developer. Those are all of our items on the consent agenda. Do we have anyone on the planning commission or staff that would like to have any of these items removed for further discussion? And if not, we're ready for a motion.
Motion to approve subject to all staff comments. Say it.
Motion and a second. All in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, consent agenda passes. Our next item is plats and plans. The first item there is Prologis Site Plan for 1,244,493 square foot warehouse industrial building on 77.65 acres, zoned light industrial located along Elam Farms Parkway, north of Joby Jackson Parkway. Prologis developer. And Ms. Green.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Our first plats and plans item is for you to consider a site plan for a very large building that's over a million square feet for a warehouse industrial user. This property is located along Elam Farms Parkway, and that stubs into Joby Jackson Parkway. If you're looking at the map, you could probably see the intersection of Joby Jackson and I-24. This property is just north of an existing warehouse, Shuan Cosmetics, which I think we might be familiar with. It's adjacent to some properties on PRD, Planned Residential District, which are a part of a single-family subdivision that's already developed. The properties to the east is a portion of developed industrial park and some undeveloped property. A large portion of that property is zoned for multifamily purposes, and to the north is mostly agricultural undeveloped as well. You have before you a site plan which proposes to construct a speculative industrial warehouse. The site plan has mostly been revised to address all of our staff comments. I'd like to invite the team up in just a moment to go through some of the specifications of the plan. I'm sure you're particularly interested in that interface between the proposed industrial zone and the existing single-family, and I think they'd like to tell you what they're doing to mitigate any of those negative impacts that may occur from having those two type uses side by side. Staff is comfortable with you, if you feel comfortable approving this subject to all staff comments. We did have a few remaining comments regarding the architecture and what they can do to kind of enhance the entrance of the building, and I've spoke on the phone with them, and they're committed to working that out. It's just they weren't able to get that revised quite yet. The material of the building is tilt-up concrete, which is generally a very durable material for industrial building and something that we like to see in these large industrial buildings. But we just wanted it to be a little bit more special in that office area and more attention be drawn to that corner, and you can see on top left image on the screen. It is of note that this property will be extending a small portion of the Elam Farms Parkway right-of-way, but also creating a new right-of-way that runs along the southern property line. So if you're looking at the image, south is to the, I guess it depends on which way you're looking at the screen, but you can see there's a proposed road along the southern border of the property, and that's actually a proposed public right-of-way that they're constructing. And we anticipate that eventually it will tie into Elam Road and in hopes that any development to the north could access the signal at Elam Farms Parkway as opposed to using that intersection of Elam Road and Joby Jackson Parkway because we know that intersection is not ideal, particularly for any kind of heavy traffic. And so eventually, we think that'll be a way to get you back to Elam Farms Parkway and access the signal. I'll go ahead and invite the team to left turn at this moment. Do you have any additional information you want to go through? And then if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Terry Mulvaney with Gresham Smith, the project landscape architect. Regarding the interface between the proposed development and the existing single-family, we worked with Brad Barbie with staff to come up with what I'll call an enhanced E-type buffer. That is what is required between these two uses per the zoning ordinance, and it has three options. One is a triple row of evergreen trees, 10 feet on center. Another one is an opaque screen fence with evergreen trees on either side, 15 feet on center, or a berm with the two rows of evergreen trees, 15 feet on center. And what we came up with was the berm, two rows of trees, and the fence. So it kind of combined two of the options. So we went over and above to provide the buffering.
Do you all have any further questions while he's up at the left turn?
So I'm assuming that the level of where these, I guess trucks might be coming in and out of here, that the fence will be tall enough where the lights won't be going into the subdivision? Does that make sense?
The photometric plan provides for shielding directional lighting, and I can't speak to detail, but the staff has reviewed the photometric plan for light spill-over standards.
But will there not be, are 18-wheelers going to be coming in and out of here, or no?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm speaking of the lights that the trucks are generating, not the lights on-site.
Oh, okay. Yeah, the berm is six feet tall, and then the plants and the fence are on top of that.
Was there any, anything in your plan? Did you state as far as the two rows of evergreens, are they a certain diameter or already a certain height, or?
They were specified at six-foot height and a mix of three different types of evergreen trees and as approved by staff.
Okay. Thank you.
As far as the end user, I'm assuming you're not ready to say who that's going to be yet, but the, do you have any idea or will there be any restrictions on the residential side as to whether or not they'll be storing refrigerated containers or anything like that that would have a continuous running motor or anything on them?
I was involved in that aspect of the project. I really can't, I really can't answer that. Do you, project engineer?
And there's also a gentleman from Prologis here. If you have any questions about this, about the specific development, of course, the folks from Gresham Smith are here for, they did the design, but if you have anything questioned about logistics or how it will be used, gentleman is here as well.
Well, I guess my question is, how much of the building is potentially going to be refrigerated so that we'd have some idea how much refrigerated use there might be on the containers?
Good afternoon. Ryan George, senior vice president with Prologis. I've got to say, it's great to be out of my house and stand in front of you guys. I'm pleased to be here today. At this point, we don't have a user for the project. The goal here is really to advance the design, advance the development approval, so that we're in a position to respond quickly and be competitive and be able to secure business. We've had a couple users express strong interest in the property, none of which have been refrigerated users. That doesn't mean that there wouldn't be somebody. Our preference would be not to put a restrictive use on it. I understand your point, though, and I guess I'll make a very quick, kind of marketing pitch on Prologis. We are an international developer-owner of properties. Unlike some other industrial developers, we take a long-term ownership view because we hold our properties long-term. We have about a billion square feet worldwide. We have about 10 million square feet in Nashville. And what that means is we view everything through that lens of being a good, good neighbor, good business partner, and we want good-looking buildings that are going to attract tenants, not just day one, but into the future. And the last thing we need are upset neighbors, you know, calling about noise, light pollution, whatnots. All that's taken into consideration. Do understand your point. I would hope that through berming and the organic matter plant on top, plus the fence, that we could mitigate any of the noise coming from the refrigerated use, if that was to be a user that came along.
Yeah, and part of the reason I was asking, I'm assuming that there's, it looks like the building's laid out as more of a cross-dock operation, and if that be the case, maybe the primary use on one side would be the refrigerated units and the other side be a little more sensitive to the neighborhood, if that's possible. I don't know how you restrict that, but I do think there's an opportunity there to at least be sensitive to the neighbors.
Certainly.
And at the same time, accomplish what it is that you're after.
Any other questions for Mr. George while he's up here? Okay, thank you very much. Other questions and comments from the planning commission?
If there are none, I'll make a motion that we approve, subject to all staff comments, and Margaret Ann working out the look of the office corner and that sort of thing.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you very much. Thank you all. Our next item is Salem Square Master Plan for nine lots on 29.18 acres, zoned commercial highway located along New Salem Highway and Barfield Road. New Salem Land Development LLC is the developer. Mr. Ware, welcome.
Yes, ma'am. Back in March, the planning commission approved annunciation and zoning of this property to Commercial Highway. This is for a master plan for that property. If you approve the master plan today, that would allow the applicant to submit construction plans for the property. The master plan shows nine lots with two of the lots being flag lots. The applicant's representative, Mr. Matt Taylor, is here for any questions you may have, and I can answer any questions you may have as well.
And so I guess the traffic, you know, it's hard to tell. I'm sure these access points that are closest to the intersection are probably a lot further away than I'm thinking they are, but obviously, we must not have had any problem from the traffic department as far as that distance goes for those access points.
Well, I'll let Matt Taylor answer that question.
Hello, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you, Chairman Jones. Matt Taylor from SEC. We worked with staff to determine that these were back outside the storage of the left-turn lane on Highway 99. We went and got T-DOT's right-of-way plans and roadway plans they're building right now to make sure it's beyond that left-turn storage. That was one very specific request by our, by the staff, so. And then we're doing improvements on Barfield itself to add some turn lanes, modify a signal pole, those sorts of things to make those access points on Barfield acceptable as well.
Thank you very much. Other questions or comments regarding the master plan?
If there are no further questions, I'll make a motion to approve, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Next item is Salem Square Section 1, Lot 1. It is Pinnacle National Bank Re-subdivision of Lot 1, final plat for one lot on 2.16 acres, zoned commercial highway located along New Salem Highway and Barfield Road. New Salem Land Development LLC is the developer, and I would like to make one comment. The name of the subdivision plat happens to be Pinnacle National Bank Re-subdivision Lot 1, and it does not have anything to do with Pinnacle National Bank, so there are several people that might abstain if Pinnacle was involved in this particular item, but it is not, if I'm understanding correctly. Mr. Ware, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. All right.
So this goes along with the master plan. This creates one lot of record and recourse easements for that one lot on the northeast portion of that master plan amendment, or excuse me, master plan. And staff recommends approval of this plat, subject to all staff comments.
And I would mention, were it not for the fact that there was a companion master plat, this final plat would likely have been on the consent agenda.
If there's no other questions or comments, I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ware. New business. Our first item is a zoning application to amend the Victory Station PUD to modify the use chart on approximately 32.6 acres located south of Franklin Road and east of Rucker Lane. Swanson Development is the applicant. Hello, Ms. Rush, how are you?
Fine, thank you, ma'am. Good afternoon, commissioners. The application is to amend the Victory Station planned unit development. The entire Victory Station planning development extends on both sides of Franklin Road to the north and to the south, and it's just east of Rucker Lane. The size of the whole PUD is 130 acres. This request to amend the PUD is for just specific parcels on the use chart that's included. The portion that would be affected is 32.6 acres out of that 130 acres. The PUD was originally approved back in 2000 by the city council and has had subsequently several times it's been amended. Most recently, it was amended in March 2018 to add additional uses to the use chart. This particular request is also to add uses for several reasons. The first one was they're asking to combine parcels J and K because the uses are very similar. The parcels are contiguous, and so they're trying to identify the ones that are omitted from one parcel so that it's reflected on both. I have presented a handout for the commission so that they can see a summary of the chart changes, and that handout looks like, like this. So it's a two-page handout. So for the parcels J and K combining, they would be adding gas station to the K portion, and then to the J portion, they would be adding pawn shop, telephone service, self-storage facility, and wholesale establishment. For the parcels Q and R, it's the same thing. They're combining the two together, and they're picking up the uses that would be omitted. So on this one, they would be adding single-family attached as a land use to the Q portion, as well as senior citizen center to both parcels. Motor vehicle service excluding body shops. It also has provision that states that there would be no outdoor storage allowed and no bay doors facing the right-of-way. That would be to parcel R. They're also adding pharmacies to R and removing motel from both of these parcels. The third thing that they're doing is they're modifying the use chart to add new uses to parcel O2. O2 is located right along Franklin Road. They would like to add senior citizen center as a use, coffee, food, beverage kiosk, greenhouse nursery, kennels, pet funeral home, and fireworks temporary stand. The fourth thing that they're asking to amend would be to parcel V, and that would be to add a nursery school, public buildings, senior citizen center, amusement, indoor uses. Those are typically, like the escape rooms is what we see, or the arcades, business school, commercial center, funeral home, general service and repair shops, glass pane, plate, and window, medical and testing laboratories, self-service wandery mat, and restaurants, veterinary hospital, and brewery. The last thing that they're asking to modify is to add on parcel O2, there's an existing building. It's address 3781, and it was previously used as a volunteer fire station. So that building was not in the official use chart, although it was on the property. So this basically adds that building and with the uses, their multi-tenant uses in there to the use chart as well. The future land use map has this designated as general commercial, so these uses are consistent with the general commercial designation, so it is consistent with the 2035 plan. Staff is recommending that a public hearing be set for this zoning amendment requested to July 8, 2020. Matt Taylor is here representing the owner and can answer any questions as to the specificity of why these uses on the use chart are being requested. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rush. Okay, questions and comments regarding the request? And if there are none, I guess we need to schedule a public hearing. July is the requested date.
I'm moving to schedule a public hearing on July 8.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next item, item B, is a zoning application for approximately 78 acres located along Medical Center Parkway, Robert Rose Drive, Wilkinson Pike, and Willow Oak Trail to be rezoned from MU GDO 1 and GDO 2 to PUD Clay Park. GDO 1 and GDO 2, Hans Acquisitions LLC is the applicant. Ms. Green.
Thank you. Good evening again, or good afternoon again.
Yeah.
Don't want to rush your day.
Yeah.
This next application we have before you is a request for you to schedule a public hearing for a zoning change located, for property located north of Medical Center Parkway. It's identified in the magenta color on the screen. It's north of Medical Center Parkway, south of Wilkinson Pike. Willow Oak Trail terminates into this property and will eventually go through the property. It's also located adjacent to Robert Rose Drive. As I mentioned, it's 78 acres, and it's all one parcel now, although in the past it consisted of several different parcels. The property's base zone is MU Mixed Use District, and it's in two overlay districts, as mentioned by Mrs. Jones. It's in the GDO 1 and GDO 2. The request is not to remove it out of the GDO, but to change the base zone from Mixed Use District to PUD Planned Unit District. I'm sure that you're familiar with the area, but just to give a little bit of background information, the properties to the north are in the unincorporated area of Rutherford County and consist of developed single-family subdivisions in the Stones River Battlefield. The properties to the west are mostly developed commercial properties with some multifamily properties. Zone CH or Mixed Use also located in the Gateway, and that's the south as well. And the properties to the east are, consist of some developed county subdivision, which has been annexed by the city, and a Henley Station, which is a large apartment community. And because I'm usually asked this question, I did do some research, and it looks like the GDO currently has 2,429 apartment units available or under construction, with 1,201 of those being on the east side of I-24, so if you use I-24 as the dividing line, they're on this side between I-24 and downtown. In 2013, the city of Murfreesboro created the Mixed Use District, did not exist before then, so these properties were zoned OG, General Office District, and RS 15, Single Family Residential District. When the city created the Mixed Use Zone, we also initiated a zoning application to change this property to Mixed Use District, so from office general and residential to Mixed Use. And the property owners were in agreement with that rezoning process. So when we created the MU, we also rezoned this property to MU. And then in 2017, that didn't include, I guess, the residential portion. The applicant made an application to rezone the RS 15 portion of property, which is what is fronts along Wilkinson Pike from RS 15 to Mixed Use, because when the city initially rezoned the property to Mixed Use, we didn't include the RS 15 portion of property. And part of that request was also to remove the Wilkinson Pike buffer off of this property, and I know that some of you recall this request because you considered it. And the Wilkinson Pike buffer is a buffer that runs along the southern side of Wilkinson Pike. It's to act as a transition between the single-family and the battlefield to the north and the more intense city development to the south. The property owner, who still owns the property, requested that be taken out of the Wilkinson Pike buffer, and in order to alleviate some of the concerns that our city council had and our planning commission had with removing that buffer, volunteered prior to second and final reading to place some restrictive covenants on the property. The Wilkinson Pike buffer has an increased setback, and it doesn't allow development, basically, within 100 feet. So in order to reduce that area, the property owner committed to recording those restrictive covenants and presented evidence they had been recorded prior to the city council having their final reading. And the restricted covenants required that a significant berm be stalled, be installed along Wilkinson Pike, and that it be installed in the next growing season, which was around fall 2017. And if you've been in the area, you know the berm's not in. And so some of you may be looking at me and saying, "We were promised that several years ago," and you were, and it's not there. And so I just do want to be clear about that. It would be my assumption if the applicant making this PUD request would probably become responsible if this isn't installed prior to then. Not to jump ahead to the program book, but a part of their program book does propose delaying constructions of a portion of that berm even further, so that is something I just want to kind of put on the front, or put on the table so you know early on. As you know, the Mixed Use District permits various types of commercial office institutional uses and incorporates some multifamily. Multifamily is the only residential use that's permitted by right within the Mixed Use District. When the applicants approached us, their initial request was just to submit site plans, but they became aware that the townhomes are not permitted in the Mixed Use District, so that prompted the need for a planned development application as opposed to just bulk zone. So, and then also, some of you are aware that several years ago, the city council became concerned with the amount of apartments that were being constructed in the Mixed Use District. Our Mixed Use District is the most intense zone we have for apartments. It allows up to 25 dwelling units per acre. And I think that you saw that the Gateway property was becoming even more limited. It was being developed, and the city council and planning commission asked staff to draft a ordinance that could restrict the amount of residential uses on the remaining Gateway property to make sure that it doesn't become consumed with high-density residential. And so we did that. And what would apply to this property, if it were bulk zone, of course, planned developments, they can ask for exceptions, but if it were bulk zone, it says, "In developments consisting of 10 or more acres in the Mixed Use District, the used dwellings multifamily shall constitute more than, no more than 25% of developable land." of developable land." And of course, it only speaks to multifamily because that's the only type of residential use permitted in the Mixed Use District. We, um, reviewed the Clay Park PUD and don't see that it can, supports the vision of a Mixed Use District because it appears to be a large residential development consisting of townhomes, multifamily condominiums, apartment complexes with nine commercial out parcels. The project is divided into seven areas, and I'll let the, uh, team go into the specifics of the plan, but I will highlight some of those, um, areas that, that we looked at. And I did provide, of course, an outline in, in your staff comments. Some of what staff became concerned with is the lack of, uh, true commitments and guidance in the program book. It shows images that were very in support of. I think that, um, as a planner who's worked in the Gateway for years and years, I'm really excited about the opportunity for one developer to come in and do something comprehensive and something that's well thought out and works together. Some of what I've become concerned with getting familiar with the plan is the lack of commitment to that. And, um, if, I know you've looked at the book, and so some areas could be townhomes, could be commercial, could be institutional, could be stacked flat condos. And there's not a lot of, like, details. And with planned developments, we're used to seeing, like, very specific details about, this is what it'll look like. And I get that some of it's larger, so you can't know everything on the front end. But, um, something that I've expressed to them, and this is not the first time anybody, on this side of the room, has heard anything that I'm saying today because we've, we've been able to communicate everything clearly. But, so now I became concerned with is the fact that, what tool does staff have to mandate that it be a mixed-use development? And so, um, I, I mean, I think the developers have a good reputation, but we just want to make sure that in the future, if one of our junior planners is a principal planner, and I don't know where I am, that they can read the book and will be able to enforce it. I did include some information, like a chart in your, uh, staff comments that talks about density. And there were two columns, one with accessory apartments and one without. And since, um, preparing staff comments, they have come back to me and told me it's not their intention to do accessory apartments. So if you've looked at those numbers, um, the column without the accessory apartments would apply, and they'll get that corrected in the program book before any public hearing. But I did want to point out, that's no longer their desire to move forward with accessory apartments in the townhomes. Originally, they proposed a, a model where you would have townhomes and you can maybe have, like, I don't think it would meet our definition of accessory apartment, but where you could rent a unit maybe over the garage. And so that was something that we, um, talked to them about. As I mentioned, they've, uh, shown some conceptual layouts. Most of them are for illustrative purposes. This is how it could develop. And, um, we've made some comments about being concerned maybe with the road network or the way that it, the designs laid out, but they're asking for those type elements to be reviewed at the site plan level and not with the plan development. But I did want to point that out to you. And I also, because you usually ask, um, I did notice that they're proposing to use private solid wait services and not the city services, which would be important. The, um, so there are several areas that are similar. Area two and six are similar. Area one and four is similar. Areas five and seven are similar, and three is just commercial out parcels. And so when I divided my comments, I, I kind of combined those areas. Um, some of the, like, areas two and six could be townhomes, or they could be multifamily condominiums or stacked flats. And, um, they would like the option to make that decision later and have it be a market-driven decision and not something that they would be required to identify in the, in the plan development program book. And they've given the, um, dwelling units for area two is 170 and area six is 75. But some of the things that I pointed out as a concern for these areas is that the design criteria, architectural standards, and, and programming for townhomes and condominiums are not quite clear. You know, and that in the Gateway, townhomes are not permitted. And so our design standards don't have a lot of detail with townhomes, and so I would look for that in a plan development program book. Some of the things that I would look for, for townhomes in the Gateway, because this is an area where we have higher expectations, we expect more quality design, is I would look for raised foundations, usable porches, fenestrations, windows, variations of roofline, offsets, change of materials, extra detailing for corner units, uh, continuous architectural styles throughout the development. I would like there to be kind of a common thread. Not everything has to look alike, but to kind of have a common thread, and that's something that our design guidelines speak to. Architecture of the garages, and of course, any type fencing. I, um, did see that they have, are proposing their smallest townhome to be 18 feet wide, and I think that's very narrow. There's, um, especially for something in the Gateway, I would think that it would be wider. You, you have the idea that the home is 18 feet wide, but also with an 18-foot wide, um, unit, you only have a couple feet left for any type landscaping. And then there are the conversations that I know that we get into sometimes about the location of utilities and HVAC, and that maybe they consume that green space that's there, and so it becomes a sea of some type of pavement, asphalt, concrete, or whatever. So with those 18-foot units, I'm concerned about how narrow they are and, um, what it does to the streetscape. I think probably some of the units they're proposing to be maybe alley-loaded. And so, but still, that alley is where you spend a lot of time when you pull in and out. And so I think it would be important to think about how that looks and how that functions. I didn't see any design criteria or architectural standards for the multifamily condominiums. I think they call them stacked flats, which, uh, Henley Station has townhome-style apartments and stacked flat-style apartments, but none of those are for sale products. That would be something to be interested in. Um, areas one and four, the options, they could be townhomes, or they could be commercial, or they could be office, or they could be a combination of those. And so that's sort of an example of what I'm saying about how it's not quite clear what, what the plan development's going to look like in the future. And again, another request for it to be market condition-driven. Areas five and seven, those, um, are proposed to be apartments, and I think area five is the one that's very much known that it will be apartments. I think there's an option that the first floor could be offices and services. And so there's a potential for that mixed use that we're looking for. Uh, but of course, the plan does not require that the first floor be office or, um, service uses that, but it could be just apartments. But this area five is there, really where their design kind of gravitates around it. They have a large courtyard, and they're proposing that large courtyard serve as a gathering space for the entire Clay Park development. And like I said, that's the one where they're pretty confident that it would be, would be apartments. Area seven could be apartments, could be commercial, could be office, or could be a combination of all of those. There's also the potential that area five could just bleed into area seven and become a larger apartment complex. The commercial out parcels are very similar to commercial out parcels that you see in the Gateway. Um, they're along Medical Center Parkway. I think that they're sized, uh, appropriately. The type of uses that we generally see in the Gateway could fit there, and sometimes, people don't take into account the, the yard requirements, and I think that they've been able to do that there. So I think that they've really been able to size those out parcels appropriately. I have provided them some feedback that some of the uses I don't think are appropriate because they're either not allowed in the Gateway in other areas, or they're, um, they conflict when you have a lot of residential uses around it. So an example of that would be, um, a drive-in restaurant. So that's like a Sonic, where you sit in our speaker boxes. It's not a restaurant with a drive-through. And so those, that's just an example of where typically you don't like those to be located right next to residential uses. And so, um, there are several uses that I asked them to remove that still are in the book. As a planned development, you can request exceptions, and so they, of course, are requesting those exceptions. I have identified six of them, and I think they have as well. Um, they are to allow townhomes as a permitted use in the mixed district, mixed-use district, which I think we would expect. To exceed the maximum density of 25 dwelling units per acre for the apartment areas, and so the density is more than that. To reduce the required parking for one-bedroom apartments from one and a half spaces to 1.1 space. And I think that they'll, um, have some additional justification they'd like to present to you about why they would like to provide, um, a, a smaller ratio for the one-bedroom units only. I think they're proposing to meet the standard for two, three, four bedrooms, but just an exception for that one bedroom. They're also asking that if that area five, where I said it was probably, it was almost guaranteed to be apartments, if that one, um, does develop with office or services on the first floor, they're asking for an exemption to any type of parking requirement for those units. So no additional parking to be provided there. I think they'll probably want to talk about that with you as well. They're requesting to reduce their rear yard setback for townhomes from 20 feet to 10 feet. And they're proposing to allow garages to count toward minimum off-street parking requirements. That's something that we've seen in the past. I think Mr. Blomley will present to you an ordinance amendment today and ask you to schedule a public hearing to consider putting something in our code that would allow that by right later, but just, just so you know. And it's six is to allow outdoor sales of food and alcohol in specified area for temporary events. And so in the Gateway, outdoor sales is just prohibited, so they're asking for an exception to that. The plan, as we've reviewed it, does not, um, respond, we, staff feels appropriately to the comments we've made. Um, I did meet with, of course, our transportation department, our public infrastructure department, and we have some existing master plans in the area. And we've also recommended that it, the plans show some roadway improvements that we would expect with any type, type of development and that we have expected with them in the past. The plan hasn't been modified to address those, and so I, um, talked to the public infrastructure department and our engineers and made sure that I would communicate that to you. Um, there is a master, there was a tra- uh, traffic plan, and I think, uh, we've reviewed it, of course, and we still want those improvements to be made. They did mention not wanting to make some of the Gateway streetscape master plan improvements, but, um, that's not really something you can ask for an exception for. Um, I just like the plan to identify those sorts of things, but, uh, they talked about not making those. As far as the future land use map, the, um, this area is identified as mixed-use character or urban commercial character. And I think it could or could not be in conformance with that plan. If this plan does develop as truly mixed use, which, like I said, I don't think anything in the, in the program book mandates that it does, then it would comply with our future land use map. And our future land use map describes this area as a broad range of commercial office and high-density residential uses and public spaces, serving surrounding neighborhoods, commercial, professional business parks, and visitors from nearby communities. If it develops with the over 1,000 units as proposed and just townhomes and apartments with a few commercial out parcels, I don't think it is consistent with a mixed-use district, and it would be more in line with our characters called the auto-urban residential character and the auto-urban commercial character. It is staff's recommendation that planning commission, uh, require applicants to hold a neighborhood meeting for this project. It is a large project. I think it's exciting to see anything here, but I also know that there are residents to the north that would be interested in having an opportunity to review the plan prior to a public hearing. I'm going to invite the design team to come up and go through the specifics of the plan. They have some slides to show you and may have some additional handouts. We would ask that, uh, you schedule a public hearing today, and staff is asking that you schedule a public hearing for August 5th, 2020. Do you have anything for me at this time?
So I have a logistics question. Um, based upon where we are today with COVID, how do you have a neighborhood meeting?
Social distance is what I understand from Mr. McKnight. So we would, you want to...
Madam Chair and Plan Commission, we had, uh, held a, uh, public, uh, neighborhood meeting two weeks ago, uh, and we did that outside, uh, and social distancing in an outside area, uh, so that we could actually, uh, have the meeting, have the meeting conducted, plus be able to social distance, and it went well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McKnight. Any other questions for Ms. Green before we turn it over to the development team? Okay. Mr. Gunther.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Green. Kevin Gunther with Reagan Smith. Good to be here in person, and thank you for the opportunity, uh, planning commissioners, city staff, and we're obviously excited about this project. I don't want to take too much time because I want to allow, um, the Heinz team and Walt O'Shea to give a little bit more about his vision and reasons for what he's trying to achieve. But I did want to touch on some things quickly, uh, related to why are we doing a plan development? What are the key things that we're looking for here? And I want to emphasize that one of them is that idea of a single-family attached to be included in this mixture of uses that can happen. We think that's an advantage for the Gateway. It's a fee ownership type of residential that brings, uh, ownership to the Gateway and also adds to the opportunity for that walkable community that we've talked about. Another thing I think is one of the prime reasons that we're asking for this plan development is the opportunity to take a large piece of what's left of the Gatton property, put that into the context of a team like Heinz who understands, uh, the long, the long-term opportunities. They're going to look at not only the residential, they're going to look at what can they do with office or commercial. We're not taking that off the table. And they, a lot of their developments are certainly very much inclusive of those things. We just don't know, uh, exactly where those are going to fall out, but we're not taking them off the table. I want to make that clear. And the Heinz team is something that, uh, we're excited about because I believe they look at the land use, they look at the infrastructure, and they look at the market, um, investment opportunities altogether in context. We're going to put a vision to this where detail and quality is going to be something that, uh, they take very seriously. And the third thing I want to point out is that with the plan development, uh, we are, yes, asking for one additional use with the single-family attached, but we are actually, uh, more restrictive and more definitive than what the mixed use would be by itself. We're actually adding more defined, um, definitions of how to shape it, what types of uses could be provided. Uh, I think, yes, relates to the land use chart, we are very close to, um, agreeing with staff. I really don't think there's anything on that chart that we can't work out. Um, so I want to make that clear. We're actually very much committed to all the architecture, the landscape, the open space criteria that's required for the Gateway and for the Murfreesboro design standards. So we're not looking to somehow eliminate those requirements. In fact, with the linear park and the open space that is planned in the community, I think we're actually adding some additional commitments of open space. So I just wanted to touch on those things, uh, allow Mr. Walt O'Shea to get into some details of his vision. I also know we're in full agreement with the neighborhood, uh, meeting. We think that would be a great opportunity to share our vision. We're happy to work with staff on making sure that that's something that can happen. So I'd like to turn it over to, uh, Mr. O'Shea.
Thank you, Mr. Gunther. Welcome, Mr. O'Shea. How are you today?
Good. Good afternoon. Um, thank you, commissioners. We're very excited to be here. It's been, uh, a, a long year or so that we've been working on this project, um, with Tommy and, and the Reagan Smith team, and excited to kind of bring it before you today. Um, you know, I, I guess, first of all, I'd really like to, to thank the staff and thank Margaret Ann in particular. Um, they have provided us with a tremendous amount of input on, on the plan to date. Uh, we've incorporated many of the suggestions that they've made. As Margaret Ann has highlighted, there's a few things that we've not been able to incorporate into the plan. And we've tried to provide very thoughtful and detailed responses where we have some of those items, so they can understand our thought process. Uh, we understand and respect how important the Gateway is to the staff, to this board, and to the city, and, uh, really want to make sure we do a great project here. As a firm, we've learned that where we excel is in situations where we can deliver a product that is unique and exceptional. We don't excel at volume, and we don't excel at commodity real estate. And therefore, we carefully select sites that warrant this custom execution. We pursued the Gatton property because we feel that this is an exceptional site that will allow us to create a mixed-use community unlike any other in the city. The irreplaceable amenity base of the shops and restaurants of the avenue, the character of place that's been established by the Gateway Overlay District, and the proximity to the interstate make the Gatton property the only site in Murfreesboro that affords the ability to create a true activated pedestrian-centric mixed-use village. From extensive MARSAT research that we've commissioned, we know that there are both demographic and consumer preferences that support the thesis for creating higher-density, mixed-use communities and walkable suburban locations. Interestingly, the preliminary surveys that we're getting back from tenants in our office buildings, uh, only, uh, that are post-COVID, we only believe that that trend will accelerate as we're seeing those tenants wanting office spaces that are more suburban locations than necessarily urban. We also know that from comparable projects that we've executed throughout the southeast, that through superior planning, architecture, and management, we can create a community in this location that will attract high-quality tenants and create lasting values. So we've come before you today, as Kevin noted, um, to request a zoning change to plan development to allow for the addition of higher-density for-sale housing, which is currently not permitted in the Mixed Use zoning district, to complement the office, retail, and hospitality uses that are permitted. Um, we have prepared a brief pa- package, uh, that I'd like to just walk you through real quickly.
It's on the computer.
Oh, I can pull it up. Okay.
It should be open.
It should be open. PDF on the bottom here. Share.
I'll get them to put it up on the screen.
Pardon? Pardon? Okay. Okay, so it's on the screen right now.
Yeah, you've been able to locate it on that computer, correct?
I've got it in front of me.
Okay, great. They'll put it up there.
Okay, okay, great. Perfect. And, okay, there we go. So a brief introduction to Heinz, just to kind of give you a little sense as to who we are and, you know, history of the firm and what we, I think, hopefully, you know, bring to this project. We're privately owned, competently, have been that way for 60 years. We're still family-owned and expect to be that in perpetuity. And really, Heinz has grown because of its reputation for creating the highest-quality products in a given marketplace. And we've provided a few examples on the screen of projects that we've executed here in the southeast. And then even more specifically, the projects that we've done in the Nashville metropolitan area, starting with Cool Springs back in the 1990s. It was a 1,000-acre mixed-use land development project within the city of Franklin, now built out its market value in excess of $1 billion. Most recent project we've completed is 222 Second Avenue, the office building in downtown Nashville. We sold that building earlier this year for a price of $725 a square foot, which was 250% of the highest price of any building that had sold in Nashville before, which was the pinnacle building, which is, which you can see right behind it. So just examples of the value creation that we think we bring to projects that we execute. Moving on to the master plan, as both Margaret Ann and Kevin noted, really, we organize and start this around the grand lawn. And the concept here is to create a space that is outdoor rooms, or then programmed for different activities. Combine that with onsite management to activate with programmed events and really have this become the heart and soul of the community. We've created, we've included a plaza area at the front of the grand lawn that would function as a drop-off and pickup space, and then also an area for food trucks. So when we're having events outside, that provides an easy way for them to, for residents to access those amenities. And here are some images of the grand lawn. So this kind of schematic plan shows an idea of the concept of outdoor rooms. As you're closer to Medical Center Parkway, which would be to the right, you see we've got the food truck area, and then a larger green open space that would have some type of a, an elevated stage to allow for, you know, small bands, events, plays to be programmed there. And then as you move back towards the rear of the, of the space, having more specific active zones for different outdoor games. And then finally, a more intimate fire pit seating area where people can get together in small groups and enjoy. So the grand lawn would then be tied to the balance of the community. And here's some, some images that we've recently done, just to kind of give you a good visual of how that grand lawn will look as you enter the project. So, I mean, it's important to us and projects like this that that initial entry, as you come in off of Medical Center Parkway, this is what people will be viewing. And we think creating a beautiful addition to what's already been, been established along the Medical Center Parkway corridor. Keep going backwards here. Just a couple of other images of the grand lawn, people enjoying the space. This will then, the grand lawn will then be tied into all of the hotel, retail, office, residential uses, and link those together through a linear park network. And this linear park will have a multi-use trail to allow people to bike and walk through the community. And we've located a potential rover transit, transit stop along the linear park system, and then have separate areas where you'd have seating and benches and walkways so that as people are enjoying that experience along the way, we've got opportunities for them to sit. Ideally, we would like to locate a hotel on the backside of this park space so that, you know, restaurant, the restaurant from the hotel can spill right out onto the linear park and integrate into that, into that network. And then as we move into different residential office components of the project, we plan on having a series of pocket parks, and those pocket parks will then link into a linear pedestrian network that ties through the community. In this particular example, we have a pedestrian corridor that goes along an existing tree line. So we always look at a site and say, what are the opportunities here that the existing natural topography or tree cover gives us? And there's a great tree line that we've programmed this whole area around to have a linear park running along it, and then have these pocket parks tie into that. And this is an example of the townhome district. And what we are planning there is that all of the townhome units will front on pocket parks, and then they will be served from the rear with garage access through an alley. So we're not planning any front-loaded garages within the community and have put that commitment into the, into the plan book. So here's kind of the overall kind of plan of how the, the linear park network and ties into the grand lawn. So the grand lawn being located right off of Medical Center Parkway as you first come into the project, and then the linear park network that connects all of the uses together. And here's an example of the first phase of townhomes that is being planned, where we have a linear park that runs along the tree line, brings into, it brings into a communal park space, and then ties back into the linear park of the overall community. And so as the rest of the project is programmed and developed, we would continue that network of park, of a linear park system. So we are planning that we would connect and have committed to connect that linear park back to Robert Rose. So that would give the residents of Henley Station the ability to walk and bike through the project, so the retail that serves would serve them on Medical Center Parkway as well as across the street to the Avenue. I just wanted to provide a few examples of, of kind of the quality of execution that we were committed to achieve here. This is a example of a multifamily project that we just actually completed in Jacksonville. Just wanted to show you some examples of, of, you know, the quality of execution that, that is kind of the Heinz standard and Heinz brand. We do expect that these units will be top of the market in terms of the rental rate and to attract very, you know, affluent, young professionals into the community. And then here's some examples of the, of the townhome product. I know one specific concern was raised about the monolithic, potential monolithic look of architecture within the townhome projects. And so we've already communicated that to builders, and are presently working with a builder, David Weekly Homes. And this is an example of a project that they've recently done in Indiana where they have three different elevations mixed in. And so we've told them, we're going to require you to have multiple elevations within the for-sale product so that we create variety of streetscape. We don't want a monolithic community. It's not what we ever do. We always encourage that architectural variety. So that's kind of just a quick overview of, of the overall plan. I don't know if it would be helpful, I know Margaret Ann raised a couple of concerns, if we should address those or how you would like us to proceed.
Yeah, I think you can go ahead and address those, the specific things that she had, that she brought up, and anything else you'd like to.
Okay. You know, I know one concern is a commitment to this being a mixed-use community, and that there is some variability in different aspects of the plan. And what I did, if you, if you look at the different areas, there are, there are really four areas where we've effectively committed to what the use type will be. Area two, area three, area five, and area six. With area two is restricted to only for-sale residential.
Can you confirm for us? I mean, they're not numbered on what we're looking at.
Oh, yeah. Let me maybe go to the other package. We can pull up the, the overall package? Is that possible?
Cable department needs to put up the, go back to the laptop here. What page would you like? Jeez, what page number is it? There you go. Perfect. Okay.
Thank you.
So if we look at, at this map and then compare it to the actual chart of all the different uses that are permitted, we have actually, you know, as Kevin noted, really restricted significantly the flexibility of what can be done in different areas of the projects compared to what's allowed under the mixed-use zoning. So in areas two and area six, really the only use that's permitted in there is, is for-sale housing. So that's the intent of those two areas. In area three, the only use that's permitted is commercial. There's no, you know, residential use that's permitted. So even just at those two areas that are fixed, that meets the standard of the mixed-use requirement within the zoning code that there be at least two uses within the project. Obviously, the intent is for there to be more, but at a minimum, we've met the minimum standard with those commitments. Area five is, is committed to be multifamily residential. There's, there's, you know, that again is going to be the first phase of our multifamily. We plan on self-developing that. Obviously, you've seen the imagery of what, what the building character looks like with the grand lawn. So those, those four areas comprise 45 acres or 60% of the overall land area. So 60% of the land area is committed to a particular use type. Now, we have asked for flexibility in areas one, four, and seven. Their use types are flexible there that could allow for office, hospitality, additional retail use, and additional residential use. Our goal is to truly create a mixed-use community. We know that the execution of a well-fought-out, well-planned, mixed-use community creates greater value for each of the uses. We see premiums in communities that we've done across the southeast that do that. And so that is our goal. That's frankly, that's a financial objective. Secondly, when you look at land values, the lowest land value per acre of any of these uses is residential. So just from a pure financial incentive, we have every incentive in the world to do as much hospitality, office, and commercial as we can in the community. So that is our, that is our prime goal. That is our base objective going into this project. See, I guess on the, there were a couple of, I think Kevin mentioned there were a couple items that are not permitted in GDO III that Margaret Ann had referenced. Now, this is not a GDO III area, it's GDO I, GDO II, that we still think makes sense. One of those, for example, is, is an amusement use. We have had interest from users like Dave and Buster's and Main Event that do those kind of big indoor amusement facilities for area one. You know, unfortunately, with COVID-19 now, they've gone dark. Talked to the guy from Main Event, and they furloughed 5,000 employees. And so needless to say, they're not actively talking about doing new facilities right now, but we're hopeful that they'll come back to the marketplace as, as the impacts of the virus and the recession wane. I guess one of the, maybe moving on to exceptions, there were, I think, two to really, that Margaret Ann asked that we speak to. One was the parking justification. We provided a table in the book. We looked at other multifamily communities that we have developed, our architect has developed, and also ones, ones that there's precedent here in the Gateway with, with the Vintage Avenue project. And really what we found that providing 1.1 spaces per bedroom provides more than adequate parking for a multifamily community. That averages out to about 1.75 spaces per unit. The majority of these units will be one-bedroom and two-bedroom units. I think the three bedrooms, there's only maybe eight to 10% are planned to be three-bedroom units. So we have found that that, that meets it. And if, if, you know, the code says one and a half per one-bedroom units, we just feel like that's putting way too much parking on the ground. It's not environmentally responsive. It's creating, you know, more heat with more asphalt on the ground. We're adding more stormwater that's not needed. And the other thing to realize about multifamily as well is that at any point in time, 5% to 10% of the units will be vacant. You have monthly rollover of tenants, and so there's kind of a static vacancy that, that occurs in multifamily. So that's anywhere between 25 to 50%, 25 to 50 parking spaces at any one point in time would be vacant because units would not be occupied as well. So. Okay, it's page 19? So I know it's a little hard to read from this scale. Hopefully, you can see it better on your screen there. But what you'll note is that if you look at pretty much all those examples kind of coming down the run there, that the parking ratios are a little less than, or right at 1.1 per bedroom and about 1.75 per unit. And so again, we feel like we have no incentive to provide less parking than the market needs. We're going to end up with a building that we can't rent. And again, we feel like this is responsible. This provides parking that's, that's adequate for the community. I guess the next question, or next, next exception that we're asking for is really to allow for shared parking to accommodate the office use. So we've noted, and actually, you know, this was a suggestion that came from Mr. Smotherman, which I thank you, to add, to look to add some ground-level office space on the first phase of multifamily. So when you first drive into Clary Park, on either side of the, the central green space, there'll be two multifamily buildings. We think it makes sense to potentially provide some service office space on the ground level. They provided some office space within the Vintage Gateway project and had good success in leasing that up, what I call micro office. So it's almost going, pre-prepared, small office suites that someone could come and rent. So we would look to do that on the ground level of the building. There's obviously, we've provided for some parking right in front of those units. And when you look at shared parking between office and residential, if we did the maximum, which is 10,000 square feet of office, which I don't think will develop that much, that would require 40 spaces, which is four per thousand. When you look at the peak demand uses of office and residential, obviously, they're, they will go against one another. Office peaks in the middle of the day and residential peaks at night. So what we looked at is when office hits 80% of its maximum demand, well, I won't run through all the details of the numbers. I can send you the information. The bottom line is between the vacant spaces because of the, the different peaks of uses, that should create an availability of about 80 spaces of residential to satisfy the 40 needed for the office space. And also, if we look at that 5% static vacancy, that adds another 26 spaces. So we'll have over 100 residential spaces that would be available on any given day to satisfy the 40 spaces required for the 10,000 square feet. So again, we, we want to be environmentally responsible. We don't want to put more asphalt on the ground than is needed, and we, we think that that can provide, that shared parking can work for the office. So I think those were the two exceptions that, that there were some comments on, or Margaret Ann asked us to speak to. I guess the other note I had was really maybe in terms of infrastructure and to kind of give you an update on, on where we are with that. Kevin, do we have that? What page that plan is for infrastructure? Maybe where we've got the different public infrastructures? And I think, I think the two, one issue that's come up that was raised by staff is, is a request for us to install turn lanes at the connection into Wilkinson Pike. So where we have the, the first phase of, of townhomes, area two, where that connects into Wilkinson Pike.
Page 24.
Page 24. Okay, so, so at the, the top end of the, you know, the master plan's not there, but there, there is a connection point that we didn't actually have in the initial plan in the initial reviews with staff. This was one area where staff had asked us to add a connection point to Wilkinson Pike for the townhomes. We went ahead and added that back into the plan at their, you know, fulfilling their request. And then subsequent to that, in the comments that we got, they then asked us to do turn lanes and improve, widen Wilkinson Pike to three lanes for portion, for the length that it runs in front of the project. When we did the traffic report, when you look at the number of trips that will exit our project onto Wilkinson Pike during the peak hour, what the traffic engineer calculated was three, three trips going in and out. So we're going to have virtually no traffic going out onto that roadway. And, and it's a very large expense to do the turn lanes and to improve Wilkinson Pike. We really don't feel that. We know that the city is planning to do that improvement. We know that the city is planning to do that improvement at some point, and just don't feel that it's appropriate for as little traffic as we're putting on that to burden the project with that. We obviously are committed to doing the buffer and berm that's been committed, and as each phase develops, we'll do that. You know, we would prefer to do it with the phase of work as it's developed rather than in advance. Obviously, the berm, the purpose of the berm is to buffer from development. If there's no development there, I don't think it's harming the residents across the street for the berm not to be there. And once we do that phase of development, we would do the berm with that. But in this way, there's property management, there's irrigation, there's maintenance to properly take care of it with the property adjacent to it. I think there were, and there were a couple other issues that our traffic engineer is still working with Ram on as it relates to turn lanes. You know, I think that's, I think once the engineers kind of get their heads together on the turn lanes, we'll come to a meeting of minds with the staff on that issue. I don't want to, happy to go into the details if you'd like, but I think it's more of a technical matter for the engineers to kind of work through. I guess the only other note that I kind of made that I would kind of throw out for consideration, I know there's another opportunity for a public meeting on, public hearing on July 8th. I know Margaret Ann requested that we push it back to August 5th. We would like to be able to hold the Town Hall meeting between now and then and still be able to hold the public hearing on July 8th if possible. I don't know if there's, it's a constraint of what's on the agenda that day, but just throw that out there for consideration. Happy to answer any and all questions or thoughts.
Can you just, just so that I can get it straight, the area, I think it's five, the initial area you're talking about developing that is apartments?
Yes.
How many apartments would be in that area?
About 300.
300?
I think we said a max of 310, I believe, in the book, because it depends on how much office we end up doing. If we do 10,000 square feet of office, it would be a little under 300 units if we do less than that. So we're just trying to balance that square footage, and once we get a better feel for the demand for office space, we'll figure out exactly how much we'll include.
Okay. And then the two areas where you're talking about, the townhome developments, what was the total?
The one area that we're programming to do in the initial phase is Area Two, and I think that's planned for a max of 170 units. And then the other area that's restricted to Townhomes is Area Six, and that permits up to 75.
I would just like to make sure that I understand this correctly, that the units that are in Area Four that we see, those are, those are not determined yet at this time, is that correct?
No, no, not at all. Now, we probably shouldn't have even included them in the plan. It was more, it was more of an internal kind of just document for us to work on, making sure we sized the multifamily correctly and we left parcel spaces on either side of it and how it would reflect, how we got the stormwater sized correctly. But no, that's down the road.
Thank you.
Ideally, that would be the ideal location for a grocery store. That's where we would like that to go, and a hotel.
You may not know the answer to this question, but if we left this open-ended meeting, if we left it like you're requesting in Area One, Area Four, Area Seven, and it all ended up being, and I know this is not what your goal is, but you would, if we left it open-ended, you would have the right to do it. At that point, what would be the percentage, if you did it all residential, at that point, that would be 55%, 60%?
Of the land area?
Yeah.
It would be probably higher than that. So total, the commercial would be Area Three.
Right.
Which is about 16 acres. So 16 out of 70, so 20%.
All right.
Mr. Shorshay, what's the estimate for the total capital investment for the 10-year
You know, setting aside, I mean, we'll put it this way, the overall built-out value of the community, we estimate to be about $290 million.
And is the phasing plan that you've got correct when you're looking at 2020 to 2025, the Area One, Two, and Three? That's what your plan is?
Correct. Yeah, we expect about a, you know, probably a five to seven, a seven to eight-year build-out on the worst end, you know, maybe 10 years.
But that Area Two residential piece of the 170 townhouses is in the first phase of what you're planning to do?
Yeah, right. Yes, the Townhomes in Area Two is in the first phase. That's correct. That's where actively working with David Weekly Homes to develop Townhomes there.
What phases, Area Five?
Area Five would be really done what we're calling in Phase Two. So the initial phase of infrastructure will be both of the entrances is off Medical Center Parkway. We've committed to do a turn lane all the way along the front edge of Medical Center Parkway, so that would be another public improvement that we'd be making. So that would kind of be the initial phase of infrastructure, and then once that complete, about a year after we begin that work, we would begin the Area Five, which is the first phase of multifamily. And we want to get that, you know, that green space, that public lawn area, that's the heart of the community. It's critical to get that in right up front.
Ms. Jones?
Yes, sir.
I could have a legal concern with this.
Okay.
And in looking at this, I can't see how this fall by as a plan for a planned development. Because a third, at least of this, we have nothing to measure in the future whether they're doing what they said they would do because they haven't said what they're going to do. And we do have the potential of 80% of this being high-density residential and parcel along, but instead of Parkway being built and then it's commercial. Now, I doubt that'll happen, but if it's a planned development, it needs to have a plan, and it may not be possible to do an 80-acre planned development. That'd be hard to do. The Avenue looked at planned development and went commercial zoning because you can't give us a specific plan for 100 acres or for 78 acres or 80 acres, whatever this is. I just, when it's going to either be commercial or office or high-density residential, that's not a plan. That's a concept. We have an idea. We've broken up some areas that we call, you know, seven, eight different areas, but there's not a plan for this. I think, I don't see how the city can adopt this booklet as a planned development. It's not sufficiently planned to let us, in the future, enforce anything, enforce certainly not a lot that we couldn't enforce.
I was looking at Areas One, Four, and Seven, I believe, are the areas that, if we ask them to remove the reference to single-family attached and/or residential from each of those sections, I mean, I don't see how we could even begin to consider leaving residential reference in Area One, Area Four, or Area Seven and try to approve. And I think that kind of goes down the path you're talking about. But I don't know if we just, is that enough? If they took off the residential reference on Area One, Four, and Seven, is that enough to call it a plan? And I don't know that they're willing to do that, but that would be what I would be asking for, so.
But since there's still not a plan, commercial, office, I'm not sure what else might go in there other than residential, but that's still not a plan. It can be a grocery store, it could be a dry goods store, it could be a furniture store, it could be an automotive shop.
Well, I think we'd have to have a use chart for those, just like, you know, Victory Station is a great example. We have, there's no telling how many amendments we have made to that plan.
Right.
Over how many years we've done that. But they had set uses they could do, and every time they want to do something different because the market changes or whatever, they have to bring it back and ask, have that done.
And I believe that each time we changed that, when we added, changed uses or added uses, they came with a design that said the townhouses are going to look like this, or the apartments will look like this, or the storefronts will look like this. So it has, my belief is, I can't pull up every one of those, and I've looked at quite a few of them too. They weren't just changes to say, okay, instead of single-family houses, we're going to build apartments. There was a plan, and it was expressed to us. Now, sometimes that plan didn't, didn't come to fruition, and in a few years, they came back and asked for another change and another plan. That's a planned development. You have a plan. You don't just have a concept that says, okay, we're going to try to do this here, we're going to try to do that there. Let us run with it, and, you know, and we'll look at offices and commercial. I'm sure they will. But that's not a plan.
Mr. Call, if I might, didn't mean to have to get up tonight, but I did want to point out, I mean, we have come back to you before in the past. West Lawn is a good example. We had a component of that area that we didn't know what the uses were, so we did, you know, it was a similar plan that basically designated the areas and did a use table for it. I think the important part of this is we are designing the infrastructure. We do have some very definitive known areas with Area Two, Area Five, and Area Six that have some pretty definitive plans associated with that. But the nature of PUDs and the nature of the market is, as we all know, it changes, it's changing daily now, you know, with what's happening in today's market. So, you know, I'm hoping that you take into consideration, you've got a proven developer here. I've worked with Heinz for 30 years. I brought them to the table. They're a known entity. They deliver on their product. They deliver quality. They know how to put something like this together. You know, the goal on this plan was really to identify, you know, a limited amount of commercial uses, to pare that list down and put them in appropriate locations and blocks that we feel works in context with what's next to them and internally, and with putting an open space network in there that can connect those various uses. So again, it's allowing some flexibility, but still committed to everything that I know I've, we've worked, I worked hard on with the Gateway area back in the past. I know the city has with the Gateway design standards, making sure we meet that criteria with the design guidelines and meet the expectations that's out there. I do understand your concern. I know we're, and again, we have some leftover blocks. Yes, we could show something there, but the reality is that the length of this is that is likely to, that layout's going to change, you know, during that length of the period.
That's true, but there is no commitment right now on Area One, Area Four, or Area Seven. I don't, there's no way you can say there's a commitment there.
Well, I'm saying to the different, I'm just saying that there's a list of uses, land uses that we've committed to that would be limited to that. So I'm hoping that we maybe fly some more commitment on some of the other areas relative to the infrastructure that helps balance that out.
We do have a commitment to high-density housing. We do have a commitment to high-density housing. That's what we've got right now with this plan.
I think one thing I'd just note on Area Seven, that we, you know, that was one area that the request of staff, you know, we went ahead and created the ability to potentially go out and pursue and do office and commercial in Area Seven. So it was, you know, as we had originally programmed that as the second phase of multifamily, I think as Margaret Ann had mentioned. So those two areas combined, Five and Seven are underneath the 25% maximum within the mixed-use zone. You know, again, we think there's a benefit to that, but I mean, if that makes the board more comfortable and we wanted to just restrict that to multifamily, we'd be fine with that. And, you know, I would say in terms of Area One, obviously, that's an area that we very much want to do commercial development. And we think frankly, that commercial development is going to occur there. Again, if it makes the board more comfortable and you'd like us to remove the residential restriction, or residential option from Area One, I think we'd be, you know, more than happy to do that. You know, I think Area Four is probably the one that's most hard to tell because we just don't know whether a grocer and the hotel market has been decimated. You know, we would request to have some flexibility as to what might still go into Area Four. And we can obviously provide a site plan that shows uses on those different areas, you know, understanding that ultimately, when we come back for final site plan review, there might be some tweaks and adjustments to that.
Well, just to say, I'm disappointed with the, you know, the level of the company that you represent and what you all have done all over the southeast, which is quite amazing, that there's not more of a vision or a plan for this particular property.
You know, I
It's very limited at this point.
When we're at this level of getting an entitlement approval.
I know it's not your first time.
Yeah, we typically, I mean, the large-scale planned community developments that we always do, the level of specificity we've provided here is frankly much greater. I mean, they're typically, you know, not showing site plan level detail on a zoning level document. That's atypical for anything we've seen in other mishapities, so and understand that that may be different here.
On strike zoning, but you're asking for a planned development?
That's what I'm saying. And all the planned developments we do, it's typically, you provide a list of uses, setbacks, you know, building restrictions. It's more about a zoning document. It's not a actual site plan. Then there's a, the next level of detail is providing site plan, which then says, okay, we're going to, here's the actual planning that we're going to provide. We don't ever really see PUD documents that require, you know, architectural requirements, and it's really about creating the zoning districts that allow various uses. I guess that's our view of kind of a PUD. And again, it may be, it may be, it may be different here in the city and...
I didn't realize it's that different. We still have site plans later, after this?
Right, right, exactly, yeah. No, understand. And I just don't know if it's the scale.
Just my thoughts. So there's a whole commission up here, so I'm sure that they have other thoughts than mine, so I'll let them speak up. I know they're not shy.
Well, I think, I mean, I'm just talking out loud, I think we've got to get past David's, Mr. Ives' comments before we move further with this. Irrespective of what our opinion is, none of us up here are attorneys, and Mr. Ives is representing the city, so I think we've got to get past his opinion before we go too much further with this.
Sure. Does it make sense for us to defer and come back at the next meeting and be able to have our attorney, get with the city attorney and?
I think that's the, probably the whole idea behind the, maybe the initial request for August 5th, is that there is still, you know, quite a bit that we really need to resolve before we want to get to the point that, we don't want to be at this point at a public hearing.
Of course.
I think there's a lot more things we can work out, and I think, you know, we would love the opportunity to have something work out. You know, we're all about seeing the best for our city, and we know that's what you have at heart too, so, but you may want to hear from some of the other commissioners that their thoughts or any in general things about any of the different areas or anything about the plan that we've seen or heard so far.
I would echo Mr. Halliburton's comments about just getting past Mr. Ives' initial concern and just state publicly, it makes me nervous to continue to keep the multifamily attached in Areas One, Four, and Seven. attached in Areas 1, 4, and 7. That's all I've got to add.
I'll touch on a couple of things, too. I really like the residential aspect of what this brings to the area. I know that's not what the original concept of the Gateway was, but just me personally, I think as we talk more about walkable communities and having, you know, fee simple ownership rather than multifamily, that's important. I know we're weighing, you know, the density of how many units we're giving here in the PUD versus the multifamily grant that we're talking about as well, because I know that's important for the overall community. Other comments, the 18-feet wide, Margaret Ann, thanks for bringing that up, and kind of, that's a point. That doesn't personally concern me, the rest of the commission may not feel that way, but I don't have that concern about that. I think if it's well-done, it can be well-done, especially if, again, we get that residential ownership that allows the walkability and those sorts of things. I do like the phasing plan with getting, if, if we get far enough in this process where we get some of the residential upfront. I think that's very important. Other comments, I'm really surprised, and I try to stay out of other people's lanes of things I don't know anything about, but I was surprised to hear you talk about the traffic impact on Wilkinson Pike. I'm surprised by that frankly, because I think it would get much more traffic than that, but that's not my expertise, so, you know, I could totally be wrong, but I do think there's no question that this project would bring a lot more traffic to Wilkinson Pike, but that's my, an expert's opinion, so, those are my comments.
I'll just make a comment past Mr. Martin's. I kind of, even though Wilkinson Pike is not anywhere like what I'm about to say, but I'm still going to make an analogy of it. Our daughter's looking at a house, and you've got to go down Manson Pike to get to it. And so, if you went down Manson Pike, especially before, before the Gateway and Medical Center Parkway was put in, that was all residential or farms or something of that nature. Even though there's houses on Wilkinson Pike, my guess is that some of those houses are not going to be there, especially after this development's done, at least on Wilkinson Pike. And so, again, I'm not a traffic engineer, but I do think it makes sense to have the turn lanes and the three lanes associated with this development, because I do think Wilkinson Pike will look differently once this project is, you know, done and mature. So, that's just a comment.
If you want, to give you a little idea, Wilkinson Pike is just one of the aspects, but Wilkinson Pike is a substandard street, and this property has frontage along a substandard street. It's the city's policy and standing that when you have frontage along a substandard street, you participate in any improvements to that substandard street. We do have plans prepared, engineer plans to improve Wilkinson Pike, however, it's my understanding that that's not on the short-term horizon. So how we approach development on substandard streets is that you may construct the improvements, or you may provide fees in lieu of the construction, or if your development calls for some improvements due to operation, not just volume, so operation, you can, rather than give money to the city, construct a turn lane. So in this case, we see that it has frontage on a substandard street. Our policy, like the other developments along Wilkinson Pike, we've done the same thing with Polaris and with the assisted living facility, is you either construct those improvements or you give us money. In this case, we can, I can refer with our many engineers on staff, and we determined that operationally, a turn lane would be more beneficial at this time than just taking money and sitting on it until a time in the future when the road is rebuilt. So that's where we are with Wilkinson Pike. It's not just like, this volume is this. It's an operation thing, and it's participating improvements to a substandard street that exists, if that helps you. And when I review these books, I just like to, if I know something's coming in the future, point it out and have them go ahead and put it in there so that expectations are set pretty early. It doesn't mean if I don't point it out that they don't have to do it later. They still will, according to our city engineer, have to do that, but I just try to get as much on the front end as I possibly can, and this is an attempt for me doing that. Like, this is information I know, it's something that you're going to have to do, let's work with it at the plan development. Even if we don't, you're still going to have to address it later, according to our city code, so.
Thank you, Ms. Brain. Yes, very much.
Mr. O'Shea, it, I've done extensive research on Heinz, and I've been, every, the deeper I got into my research, the more impressed I was with the quality of your development, the value that you've brought to the community in the area at which you've developed. I mean, I can't tell you how impressed I am. I am a little bit concerned with the Wilkinson Pike, and I know we've discussed this project in the past, but I don't think we've had a conversation about Wilkinson Pike. But in Murphysboro, we traditionally have basically not had an impact fee with housing or, or commercial properties so much as to say that when a commercial development is developed, that it carries the burden of improving the substandard roads that it is adjacent to. And so, me personally, I would, I would really struggle with you not helping to support the roadway that is adjacent to your property. And so, so I'm a little bit hung up on that. But, but, but the quality of the product, I'm not, I'm not really concerned with. I do think that the location of this, being right next to the interstate, is one of those areas where density is, for me, acceptable, but because it, for people who live in Nashville, and they say they're coming, that those people would, would probably love for this particular location. I've also got a concern for our existing brick-and-mortar businesses in the future, because the, with the economic trend that we're seeing right now, it's going to become more and more challenging for brick-and-mortar with online sales and what the COVID's even having the effect on the economy as far as how businesses can operate. So I think the location is good for residential. I do have a little bit concerned, I've got a lot of bit concerned with the vagueness of the plan, because I have to concur with the legal department. There is three areas there that I don't think we're really getting a plan on, and so unless you're just saying, "Yes, it's definitely going to be one of these," it is a little bit vague as to what we're actually reviewing. But I think the project is, I like the project. I like the location of the project. I like, it just needs more definition to it, I think, for this board up here to make a decision on whether or not it's a good idea or not. And it, and I wish you were further along, and I wish there were more information there and perhaps, and it's my fault, because I probably should have said, "We need more definition on these particular areas" when you and I reviewed it privately. And the, the commercial properties at the entrance weight of this, where you'd have residential above and, and commercial on the lower level, we've seen some success with that. I know the Vantage has had tremendous success with people wanting to go in and take a three or four-bedroom apartment area and turn it into four small offices, and have been extremely successful leasing those. So, so for small entrepreneurs or small business people, I think there's a real opportunity to have an ideal location here with a, a really substantial market next door. I think the residential will add to the potential of success for the avenue. I, I think there's a real connection there as far as the, the, the future of the avenue and its potential of continuing to succeed may be tied to more residential, because obviously I think there, there has to be more support for that area than, than what, what it's currently experiencing in order to continue to provide what we've experienced as far as the quality of that product.
Right.
And, and I think your, your level of expertise in this area is phenomenal. I mean, I just think you're the perfect person to develop it. We just need a little bit more information, and, and I need some commitment out of that roadway personally, as far as Wilkinson Pike's concerned, because with that, that's not having impact fees, basically what I would be telling every other person in Murphysboro is taxpayers are going to pay for that roadway next to your project. And, and just like Mr. Martin said, there's no scenario that you're going to add this many homes in there and it's going to have that little impact on Wilkinson Pike. I mean, that turn-in lane, it's going to carry a lot more than three, three vehicles per hour or whatever it was. It's, it's, it's going to carry significantly more than that with, with this volume, because I mean, just, you know, I think for me, this is, that road is primarily the in and out, the quick way to get back up to Thompson Lane if you're at the Commerce, or Chamber of Commerce. I think we all use that as our quick way, and, but it is the ultimate substandard road in Murphysboro that needs improvement. It needs to be improved where it's at today. I mean, it's, it's a road that's failing in conditions. Any traffic that you add to it, I think I would have a concern with it if we didn't ask you to at least put some investment into the improvement of that roadway.
Okay. All right, I hear your comments. Yeah, I guess one thing to note on the, I didn't make this point on the high-density housing and why we think this is an appropriate location for that. When you think of the growth of the city and looking at both the city's projections in terms of your future, future use plan out to 2035, as well as just looking at the growth that's occurred over the last couple of years, you're adding little over 2,000 housing units a year to the city. If you look at this project over a, you know, seven-year horizon, this represents maybe 5% to 6% of that growth, meaning 95% of those housing units need to go elsewhere in more remote locations within the city, and just creating more congestion, more traffic. Where here, you're putting the housing next to jobs, next to services, and really minimizing the impact on other areas of the city. So, we do believe from our experience and also just from good planning practice that this is a great place for the high-density housing because of the investment that's been made by the city, because you're approximate to the avenue, and because you're approximate to the interstate. So hence, that's part of our thinking as to why, you know, when we first looked at the site and started looking at analysis here, why we do think the higher density for sale as well as the multifamily, that this is an appropriate, the most appropriate place in the city for it. Otherwise, those units are just going to get pushed out to the suburban fringe.
Yeah, and this, the strategy for me, both recently and currently, has been to try, and when we look at increased density, is to either have it in the downtown area, which seems to have some desire for downtown density, around the university and next to the interstate. If this same project were being proposed in Walter Hill, I would really struggle with it, because all that traffic that would be relocating to Murphysboro would go, "How's it going to get from where it's located to the interstate or to 840?" I mean, it would just, it would be a traffic nightmare worse than the nightmare we're already experiencing, and, and adding to the challenges that we already face with traffic. This is probably a great location for density, because like you said, it's got jobs located nearby, it's got shopping located nearby, it's got the interstate nearby, so basically you're not adding all that traffic to Murphysboro, you're adding traffic to that area. And so, it, it's not necessarily going to have the impact that it would if it were located with density in other locations.
I had one clarifying question, and this may be my inexperience, but I know we've had some discussions surrounding plan developments and getting things approved, and then maybe, and I'm not trying to take the teeth out of what we're talking about as far as wanting more clarity, I think that makes some sense, but we've had instances where folks have brought back plan developments and wanted to change the plan, and I think we've questioned the motive surrounding the original submission of what we approved, and then they came back and changed it. How is it different in this situation if, if the applicant's saying that, "Hey, we're not 100% sure what the market demand is, so we're asking to peel that back a little bit," versus forcing them to submit something that they end up changing, and then we're trying to figure out why we did what we did and why we agreed to do it? Is this the same? Is it different?
I would say one of the biggest things that we've experienced over the past would be the fact that Mr. O'Shea and Heinz may not be the person two years from now that comes in to develop one of these parcels.
Gotcha, okay.
And then they get to go about, then we've lost that we did all this based on what Mr., you know, Mr. O'Shea is telling us on behalf of Heinz.
Right.
And then, whoosh, somebody else buys it, and all of a sudden, we don't really like the way that person, we don't believe in their commitments, we don't like their product, but they get to do it because that's what the plan said.
And so, part of this is the size of what we're talking about-
Yeah.
Because of how the, the time it's going to take to work this out and develop it and build it up.
And oftentimes, when they've come back, it's been a situation where they said, "Okay, we're going to put a strip mall here and a quick sack here and a, and an assisted living on this side of it." And it was a multi-use, but they gave us a plan, and then they would come back later and they'd say, "Okay, well, we can't find a use for assisted living, so we want to change this to something else." We had a plan that was basically saying, "This was what we're going to use it for." It wasn't as general as, as what we're experiencing with Areas 1, 4, and 7. I guess it is the, because as Kathy has said here, this is, this is just a blanket permit to say, "You can do what you want to with this property at that point," because there's-
Who truly knows zoning on it at all.
There's, there's, there's no plan and there's no zoning.
In this plan.
So, it, and I think that, that's where David's coming in and saying, you know, I, as much as I like this project, I think the best option for us today would be to defer it based off of the legal department's recommendation of having a provable plan, because I don't think any of us want to go against the recommendation of our legal department. So, it, I would, I would go ahead and make a motion to defer this, and we can discuss it on another day.
We have a motion to defer.
Say it.
And a second. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks for all your time and answering all our questions and helping us understand where you are, and hopefully, we've been able to provide enough for you all to move forward, and we'll look forward to seeing you back again.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, moving on to staff reports and other business. We have proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance to Section 26, off-street parking, queuing, and loading regarding off-site parking agreements, joint parking agreements, and other miscellaneous items. The City of Murphysboro Planning Department is the applicant. And Matthew, Mr. Bromley, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the Planning Commission. We've discussed this several times. We're back before you for you to consider scheduling it for a public hearing. This is the, the amendments to Section 26 of the zoning ordinance dealing with, dealing with off-street parking, queuing, and loading. At our last day meeting, we had, we heard some concerns of the Planning Commission regarding the requirements that we were proposing, or the language that we were proposing for developments that we're proposing to use to count garages toward their minimum parking requirements. And so, there are, so I feel like I need to preface that by saying, there are only certain zoning districts where, where garages may count in the, in this ordinance, under the current ordinance and under, under this ordinance, where garages may count towards the minimum requirements. In those zoning districts where that's not permitted, how a garage is used is, is nothing that, that we're concerned about. This is primarily with regards to townhome developments and multifamily developments, and so properties that are zoned RSA 1, 2, and 3, and RM 12, and RM 16. So, what we were proposing to do is to put dimensional requirements for those garages in those developments where the developer chooses, voluntarily chooses to, to count their, or to, to count the garage parking spaces toward the minimum requirements. And developments where the developer is not looking to count the garage spaces toward the minimum parking requirements, what is in this ordinance amendment would not be applicable to those situations. So this is only for developments where the developer is voluntarily asking to have the garage spaces count toward the minimum parking requirements. I mentioned at the May 20th meeting that there were, that the dimensional requirements, we had had a stakeholder meeting with about seven or eight developers who, who do townhome developments. I think we- I think we've arrived at dimensions for both the one- and two-car garages that are, that set some parameters so that we know, you know, we know what, we're not wrestling with the developers to say, look, you have to have them be this, because right now, there are no dimensional requirements. So I think the outcome of that meeting was is that these dimensions were, there was a general acceptance level by the developers in that stakeholder meeting for the dimensions that we proposed. Once again, if a developer is not seeking to use parking, the garage parking toward the minimum parking requirements, or if it's in one of those zones where that's not even an option, we, the garage dimensions are nothing that we would concern ourselves with, unless the garage dimensions were specified as a part of a plan development. But we're not really talking about plan developments here, we're talking about the bulk zoning districts. We also heard concerns at the Planning Commission meeting last month about the language regarding enforcement of the ordinance. So what we have done, we've tried to make the language in the ordinance a little bit more permissive, and I say that with the caveat that any regulation that's in our ordinance is an enforceable regulation. And so, but what we have done is we have taken out the sentence with respect to both the single-family attached and the multifamily that specifically calls out that not adhering to those requirements is a violation of the article. So we've taken out that explicit language, but as I mentioned, there's the understanding that anytime there is noncompliance with anything in the zoning ordinance, it's technically a violation of the zoning ordinance. But we took out that explicit language. We also made the language more permissive to state, you know, we looked at the language and thought that we were, you know, maybe a little bit too restrictive. We were saying that garages could only be used for parking of vehicles. We don't want to restrict people's abilities to use their garages to, you know, say if you had a garage that was greater than a one-car garage but less than two purposely to be able to have, to be able to store a CDO or something, or to have some personal household storage. So what we've done in the instances, and I want to emphasize, in the instances where developers are voluntarily seeking to count garage parking spaces toward the minimum parking requirements, what we've said is that those, the household storage, storage of personal watercraft or motorcycles is only prohibited if such precludes the ability to park the number of vehicles that were on the original plan to be counted toward the minimum parking requirements. So, in other words, if a developer of a townhome development said, we're going to count one, two spaces in this two-car garage, but he oversized the garage, or if he didn't oversize the garage and there's storage in there, but there's still room enough to get two cars in there, then we'll be silent on whatever that additional storage. And I think that was our intention from the beginning, but I think our language might have been a little bit too harsh in the proposed ordinance. As far as enforcement, it's not anything that we would be driving around looking for violations. It's the kind of thing that if it's brought to our attention that there is a parking problem in a particular development because there is, you know, there were garage spaces that were counted to meet minimum parking requirements, and there are people abusing that and not parking any of their vehicles in their garage, then we would look into that to see if there was a violation of the article. But it is not something that we would be actively pursuing, and we do have the clause in there that it is something that we will require to be in a legal instrument that would be enforceable by a homeowners association. And so, there would be that second enforcement option, and I think that in some instances, I'm not saying all, but in some instances, people will look towards their homeowners association and the third-party management company before they look to us to enforce something like that. So we've heard the concerns of the Planning Commission, we tried to address those concerns. I think what we're trying to do is to strike a balance, knowing that, you know, we've seen the demands by developers, that they want to be able to have garages in townhome developments, they want to respond to the market demands, and they don't want to oversaturate their developments with on-street parking when those are areas that could be used for, not on-street parking, but surface parking, when those are areas that could be better utilized on-site. So, and also, we understand that garage parking is desirable, and we want to be able to encourage that. So we're just trying to put some parameters on that, and we hope that we have addressed the concerns. Happy to discuss that further. We would ask that if the Planning Commission feels comfortable moving forward, that you schedule it for a July 8 public hearing. If not, I'm happy to try it again next month.
Y'all have worked very hard on this, so hopefully, we're about there. What do you all, I know Mr. Martin and Mr. Smuttermann both had a lot of input in this. Y'all comfortable with the public hearing?
I had one question, and I appreciate all the clarification, because I know I expressed some concern about, you know, us having supervision over how people use their garage. I didn't really want to be in that business. But relative to the number of, and thanks for the clarification on the specifics on when this applies, because that's good for me to hear, but any feel for how many projects we've had or have recently that this is applying to? Is it applying to two projects? Is it applying to every townhome project? Are they typically the smaller projects, or are they the 300, you know, unit projects? Any feel you can give me for that?
Yeah, I think what we've seen is that the trend is that in most townhome developments, developers are looking to garage park at least some of their units, and by doing so, they want to be able to count those garage parking spaces and not have to provide surface parking, or not have to provide all their required parking spaces in surface parking spaces, whether those are driveways or traditional parking lots. I think the older model of townhomes is probably, you know, where, you know, I think of like Barfield Commons, some of Old South's older townhome developments, cottages at Indian Park, where I think everything is surface parked, and it's basically just like a parking lot in front of the units. I think those are becoming less and less common, and we're seeing more and more of the garage parking spaces. So we're trying to get out ahead of that. You know, one of the things that, and I know Margaret Ann and Marina and Amelia and I have done over the years is that whenever we've had one of these, and we want to make sure that the garages are, you know, there are provisions in place when it's a plan development to, that they're going to be functional as parking spaces, you know, we kind of have to wrestle back and forth with the developers until we get to a size and until we get to some, you know, how they're going to be used. And so, I think, you know, one of the things that we heard at the stakeholder meeting is that, and I think this is pretty universal, is that developers like predictability. They don't like to be able to, when they design, they like to know what standard they're designing to, and I think, and we like that too, frankly, and so, not having these standards in place has meant there's been, you know, a lot of back and forth on all of these projects instead of there just being a standard in place that everybody can look to and to generate more predictability.
So I think what I heard is it applies to all, probably all townhouses, all townhouse projects.
I'd say probably at least 95% of the ones that we've seen over the last five years.
Okay.
I guess that was kind of the long way of answering your question.
I just want to make sure I caught exactly what you were saying, so thank you. I appreciate it.
Not to get too far into the weeds, but what are the dimensions that we're agreeing on?
Sure, sure. So, I thought we really had a good stakeholder meeting, and that was Mr. McKnight's idea to get just a group, not every townhome developer in the county, but to get a group that we know submits townhome projects on a regular basis, and really had a good discussion. And I think that what we tried to boil it down to was, when we were looking at this, is what did we have in common to try to find the common ground? And I think we all agreed that we wanted predictability, and it was just a matter of getting to the dimensions, and I think that we got there. For two-car garages, we came to 19 feet, 4 inches wide by 20 feet deep, and for one-car dimensions, 11 feet, 4 inches wide by 20 feet deep.
That's very specific.
It is, it is. That was, it was kind of funny the way, one of the townhome developers said, these are our standard dimensions, and he threw that out there, and everybody said, well, that sounds pretty good, and-
Can I ask another question, not to, did you get your, is that what you wanted?
Yes, thank you.
Hypothetically, and I'm just curious, and you guys look at this in much greater detail than I think we do on occasion. If we said that we do not, or if I said, hey, what would it do to a potential development if we did not want to allow the garage to count as parking? Off the cuff, what does that do to the development from the standpoint of, you know, density of the development, street parking on the development? Just from your experience, what does it do to the development?
I think it would create, we're on-street parking, it would probably, I think the garage unit, it would discourage garage units. So I think garage units probably are a little higher price point. It would, I think, increase the visual clutter in front of the units, because instead of having vehicles parking inside, you would have driveways, and the driveways, you know, as you've seen on some townhouse developments, the houses are close together, so you have very little greenery in front of the development, and you have driveways, so the majority of the front of those units are going to be vehicles parked out there instead of, you know, they're dominating the landscape instead of being able to see the fronts of the units. I think that's probably, like, the visual clutter in my mind is probably the biggest impact to not making provisions for counting the garage parking spaces. Thank you.
Sure.
My own comment would be, Matt, I think you've done a good job, but we want to see you come to one more time.
I can talk about this every month if y'all like. I call that job security. I don't know, if I keep bringing this back every month, y'all may question my competence and-
No, you're doing a great job. All right. We need to schedule a public hearing if y'all are ready for that.
So move for July 2?
Motion and second. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you all.
Mr. Bromley? All right. Do we have any additional staff reports or other business?
I have none.
Okay. Thank you all. We stand adjourned.